Welcome. Holidays are coming, let's be of a good cheer at least for a little while longer here unless we break. Thank you very much. Welcome back. I'm gonna call the public session to order. We met at seven and went to executive session. We're gonna resume now, public session. In just a second, we will all stand for a moment of silence. And of course, we've lost naturally Nelson Mandela and we've lost others, you know, in our community, other people in our community. We want to think about them in our moment of silence, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda?
Stand up.
Show Ms. Specter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Okay, let's vote on that item. Item five is our consent agenda, which includes our consent agenda, approval of minutes, facilities report, technology report, budget update, ratification of personnel. Is there any discussion of any of these items before we take the motion? Do I hear a motion?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Specter. Vote on that item.
So, I logged out, I'll just log back in. Okay, thank you.
Sanders doesn't come up. Thank you, unanimous vote on the consent agenda. We're gonna have our student focus, but before we do, there's two people, there are a lot of people help the board. But each year, we like to recognize two of our assistants that help us a lot, I mean, do a lot for us in getting this meeting ready. And at this point, Ms. Brill has something for Georgiaette. Jill, would you come forward? Or don't, why don't y'all just stand up if you can, but we wanna recognize you at this time of year, and thank you for what you do for the board. Thank you. Yeah, if you stood up, Georgiaette, it'd be disastrous with everything going your way. Okay, this time, we're gonna have our student focus. Who was gonna head that? Dr. Hamm?
I'm gonna turn it over to Sue Mallett, and I think she's gonna turn it over to Blythewood High School.
That's exactly right. As you walked in this evening, you saw some festivities taking place downstairs. I'm gonna let Keith Price, principal, sort of share what's going on. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Fleming, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Hamm and executive staff members. Here at Blythewood High School, we spend a lot of our time and our energy focusing on what we call the four A's: academics, athletics, the arts, and what you've experienced tonight is a small piece of activities, student activities. And we put a lot of our time and attention in showing and giving our students opportunities to give back to their community. And I have two young ladies here that are chairs of what you see going on, and gonna tell you about some other things that are going on and have been going on for quite some time. It's our Holiday Wishes Annual Winter Service Project. And I have Ms. Alexandra Herrera and Ms. Abby Clark who are gonna give you more details.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to personally welcome the members of the school board, district office staff, and the public to Blythewood High School. My name is Alexandra Herrera, and I am the 2013 Holiday Wishes chairperson. Every high school in the district has their own unique winter service project that benefits local food banks, hospitals, shelters, and many other organizations. I'm so glad that Richland School District Two gives us the opportunity to help others and make a difference in our community. At Blythewood, we have four different projects taking place in the months of November and December: canned goods, children's books, stocking stuffers, and foster children. Holiday Wishes is completely student-led here at Blythewood. In the past two years, the students of Blythewood have collected over 51,000 cans, sponsored over 250 foster children, donated over 7,800 books to the children's hospital, and stuffed over 750 stockings for children affected by sickle cell disease. We are very proud of our accomplishments as a school and the impact we have made on our community. Tonight, we are hosting 125 foster children and their families here at Blythewood. Abby Branham is here with me to tell you more about our foster children's project.
This year, our goal was to sponsor 125 children living in foster care that otherwise may not receive any presents during the holiday season. After matching sponsors throughout the school with the children in need, the gifts are presented at the party, which is actually going on downstairs right now. At the party, children are enjoying dinner, creating ornaments, decorating bookmarks, and meeting their sponsors. The most rewarding part of the process is seeing the look on all of their faces as they light up with joy upon coming into the party. I am happy to report that we successfully met and exceeded our goal by sponsoring 127 foster children in our area. We have all had the pleasure of helping others as well as improving on our teamwork skills.
Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We hope you enjoyed your time at Blythewood High School.
Do any of you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just a comment. One, it looks like a lot of fun down there. I would much rather be there than here, but I have responsibilities. And two, I applaud you for having them come here and meet you and be part of the process. I think it's so much more meaningful than just the collection of materials to hand out and gift, so it looks like everybody's having a good time down there.
For the comments. Y'all did a great job. Again, we could hear 'em having a good time. Was it the students or the foster children were the loudest down there? I mean, it was really, I couldn't tell.
Probably equal.
That's good. Y'all look like y'all having a great time. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Ms. Mallett, is that?
That's it, yes, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Did anyone sign up? Okay, well, I'll open the floor. If there's anyone at this time who'd like to address the board, I'll give you three minutes and that's school business. Seeing no hands, we'll move on. Old business, action requested, approval of the calendar. Dr. Hamm?
Dr. McDaniel will actually be kicking off the discussion of this and introducing the group that worked to put together the calendar and the vote on the recommendation. Or maybe you're not introducing the group.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Tonight, we have Mr. Ashley Bruton from the communications office and Ms. Terri Butts, former district teacher of the year, to talk about the calendar and answer any questions that you might have. One thing I wanted to note that I sent to you through the board brief is that since the time the initial calendar was presented, the State Department of Education released some testing dates that led us to make a minor change, and I outlined that when I sent you the email, but with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Butts.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Fleming and members of the board. You have the calendar before you, I believe, and I believe we're up for a vote on tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have any questions about the changes that have been made to the calendar?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to, I guess, ask Fred this question. Do you guys collaborate with Richland One when we're doing the calendar? Because I know we do have a lot of teachers who teach in Richland Two, but there are kids that attend Richland One and vice versa. So do we do that as a sheer collaborative with Richland One?
Mr. Bruton communicates with the people responsible for creating the calendars in Richland One, Lexington in Richland Five, Lexington One, and when this change was made, he communicated with those districts as well. And Richland One is adopting the exact same spring break, making the same change that we made for the very reasons that I'm sure you're asking.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Just a question about graduation. When are those dates made? I mean, I know fifteen, it would be too much to be even thinking about that, but when along the year do we usually get those dates for graduation?
Dr. Fleming, typically, we meet at the Coliseum following graduation, so during the summer, as soon as possible is always preferable. And during that time, you know, we're competing against every district in the Midlands, and so that's why we don't always get the date we want. However, we will be trying to set that as soon as possible after the June graduation.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Chairman, let me say how pleased I am with just the aesthetic look of the calendar.
Yes, I like it too.
I like it a lot, just wanted you to know that. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time is an action item. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2014-2015 school calendar?
I move that we approve the calendar, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote on that motion. That's great. Good job, everyone. Next item, new business action requested, name for, presented a name tonight for Elementary School Nineteen, and I think we're renaming another school, so with that, Fred or Ashley, who's ever?
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Ashley Bruton from the communications office facilitated the committee that did the naming, and he's brought some of the participants in the committee to help make the presentation to the board about the proposed names for Elementary Nineteen and also an adjustment to the name for Lake Carolina Elementary. Mr. Bruton?
Fleming, board members, Dr. Hamm, and honored guests. My name is Emma Kohler, and I am a proud Gator fourth grader at Lake Carolina Elementary. I am honored to be involved with the Elementary Number Nineteen Naming Committee. As the vice president of Lake Carolina, I feel strongly that I will represent the voice of my peers while helping to name the new school. I really like the idea of keeping a united school name of Lake Carolina with upper and lower to describe the two branches of the school. I think keeping the school united with a common name is the best choice. I value your time, and I want to thank you for considering my opinion. Good night and thanks.
My name is Michael McGinn, and I'm a third grade student at Lake Carolina Elementary. I've been a student at LCE since I was in kindergarten, and I love my school. I was very happy to be picked to help name our new school. First, we had to decide if it's one school of two campuses or two separate schools. Like Emma, I figured it should be one school of two campuses. We brainstormed many ideas. It was important to us, even though we are in a new building, we feel a part of Lake Carolina Elementary. When we graduate, we want it to be from Lake Carolina Elementary. I will be happy if we are still one school name is. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alicia, and I'm a third grader at Lake Carolina Elementary. I was so stunned when Dr. Berry told me I could help in naming the new school. I was so excited. On the day of the meeting, we thought of suggestions such as primary and intermediate, west and east, and upper and lower. We were not sure about primary and intermediate because intermediate sounded like middle school. We liked west and east, but we thought people would pose questions about which school had the younger students and which had the older. We all agreed that Lake Carolina Elementary Upper Campus and Lake Carolina Elementary Lower Campus would be the best name to keep us together as one school with two campuses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name is Suzie Watts, and I am proudly serving my second term as the president of the PTO at Lake Carolina Elementary. I am also a mom of a first grader, a second grader, and a third grader, so I will have children at both schools next year. So I have a vested interest in this on both sides. And as y'all realize, Lake Carolina as a community is very unified, and this was seen pretty clearly as the new school was being built and decisions were being made on that. And you can also see that our students, our parents, our community have a lot of pride in our school, and we've seen that through the students that were talking just before me. As a parent, as a school leader, and as a Lake Carolina community member, I see the name of Lake Carolina Elementary Lower and Upper as not only the best choice, but also as a clear voice from the community and from the students and the school, because it continues that tradition of pride, the involvement, and the community that we have in both the neighborhood of Lake Carolina and also in the school of Lake Carolina Elementary. Thank you.
At this time, do we have any questions?
Questions for the esteemed representatives from Lake Carolina. I was there, and I didn't say anything. I was just listening to you guys as y'all did your work for that meeting, and it was lit. Ashley, I want to comment, I want definitely to compliment you on your leadership in guiding through the process without interjecting or anything like that, just making sure it flowed and nobody got stuck on anything. And you did a great job with that, and I want to compliment you on that. But the kids were, they were great. This is the way they were in the meeting. They didn't, they were a little shy at first, but for some reason, it didn't take long for them to open up, and they did so. And the parents that were there were great, and the people who taught, at least, were the principals, I think. They didn't say anything hardly and just followed along with the meeting. But I want to thank this committee, because I saw you at work, and you were professional as third graders it could possibly be. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, just a quick one. I actually had a radio show host call me and do a little interview about the school and the name change, and I went ahead and just told him what the name was gonna be. I figured it was gonna go by. You guys did such a great job, so I've already been spreading it is the word, so if we vote in a different direction, I'm in trouble.
You're in real trouble. Do I hear another name option? I'm just teasing with you. Okay, the name, Lake Carolina Elementary School Upper Campus, Lower Campus have been presented to the board. Is there a motion?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
I second.
Second. Okay, further discussion? Okay, we'll vote on that motion. Congratulations. Your name passed, unanimous. Some of the Lake Carolina people are probably gonna leave us now. Okay, the next item on the agenda tonight is a personnel matter, board policy, board concerning board member conduct. I'm gonna read a statement, and then I'm gonna take a motion on the statement, okay? Fellow board members, I believe that we have a public responsibility to address an issue that has received widespread community concern and media coverage over the past few weeks. I refer to the actions and statements of one of our own board members, Melinda Anderson. We all know Mrs. Anderson to be a person of very strong feelings, a compassionate person who has served this district for many years. Like the rest of us on this board, and indeed in this room, Mrs. Anderson cares very deeply about members of her own family. Maybe because of this passion, Mrs. Anderson overstepped her role as a board member and made serious threatening remark about a head football coach in the district during a meeting with the district superintendent, Dr. Debbie Hamm, and our chief human resources officer, Ms. Roosevelt Garrick. Mrs. Anderson's remark, reported similarly by both Dr. Hamm and Mr. Garrick, was threatening enough to require us by law to report the matter to law enforcement. About three weeks later, an incident report was filed with law enforcement in connection with football practice based on concerns reported by the coaching staff. The board discussed these incidences with Mrs. Anderson present on more than one occasion in an effort to get to work through these issues with her. This is not about a coach or staff, but about ownership of actions by a board member and the fallout they produced. On November fifth, I issued a statement on behalf of the board, making it clear that this behavior was intolerable and that the board was committed to our high code of ethics. Apparently, Mrs. Anderson dismissed the seriousness of the board's statement. She has since been quoted in the media as characterizing the aforementioned incidents as foolishness. She said, "I'm far too intelligent to attempt to argue with these untruths." Well, we can't argue with the untruths, we can fight against them. We can fight against untruths that dismiss these significant incidents as foolishness. We can fight for our code of ethics. We can fight to protect district employees from interference, harassment, and threats by school board members. That is what we can and must do. This board considers itself compromised and must address this matter. And so, as an affirmation of that fight, I now entertain a motion for this board to censor Mrs. Anderson for her words and actions in connection with these incidences. It is my fervent hope that as we do so, we can commit ourselves to the vital responsibilities for which we have been elected. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board censor Mrs. Anderson for her words and action referenced in your statement.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Do you hear the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the draft of the letter regarding the proposed censure that you wish issued on behalf of the board as it relates to actions and conduct of Ms. Melinda Anderson. I'm extremely disappointed that this action is even necessary. I believe that as chairman of this board, and we as an elected body of public servants have been forced to take such a drastic step, therefore, it is with tremendous personal and professional anguish that I feel obligated to support the action. Although I feel there are two issues that have been co-mingled into one, it does not advocate us as a board of our responsibility to have the last word in this very unfortunate and tragic situation. Let me be perfectly clear, in my opinion, there are no winners in this situation. And therefore, as much as it pains and anguished me, I will support the motion. This has been one of the toughest issues that I've experienced since I've been a member of this school board. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote. Motion passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion about our snapshot update, which we received at our last board meeting. And again, Mr. Jackson requested we discuss it later at this board meeting because of a lot of information, you know, to go over, so I wanted to, this time, open it up. I think Mr. Plots was doing the update. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hamm. In your packet, you'll see a brief report in regards to the five-year data snapshot. The information that you're gonna find in there will help show you the increase in student enrollment since the year 2007, 2008. The district's currently just under 27,000 students, making it the fifth-largest district in South Carolina. This is a 13% increase. Along with the increased enrollment, you'll also notice a 3,000 student increase in students receiving free lunch within the district over that period of time. This is a 40% increase in students receiving, eligible for free or reduced lunch. The district currently is just under 50% free and reduced lunch ratio. You'll also see, one of the things that has occurred since then is Dr. Debbie Hamm has invited a Richmond Two community to participate in the district's poverty and diversity seminar awareness related to that information. We've also noticed that despite a 20% decrease in the base student cost, we put computers in the hands of her students in grades three through 12. Graduation rates have increased over that period of time and have fewer dropout rates. This is a brief summary of some of the information that you'll find in the packet. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We have a lot of positive trends here, though, as I've said in the past, it's somewhat difficult when we look at just a single year, like '07, '08. In fact, just to show you how different times are in the data that you use there versus where we are today, the district went from 100 meg's of internet access to terabyte of internet access, which for those of you who don't know what that means, it represents a thousand percent increase in our internet bandwidth. So that just shows you where we were in 2008 versus today. But one of the trends that continues to disturb me, and we've talked about this before, is particularly our pass scores in eighth grade. It looks to me like in pretty much every area except for writing, our eighth-grade students are below the South Carolina average in pass scores. I know that we looked at third-grade reading and where our students were, and at the time, we made the comment that we do very well at that point, but once we get past third grade, we start to see some issues. So I guess, and we know that middle school is a problem and an area we're continuing to focus, but can I get from somebody just an overview on what we're doing to address this continuing trend?
The continuing trend in?
Of eighth grade?
Eighth grade?
Yeah, underperforming versus the state in our pass scores.
Ms. Sue Mallett has actually, that's part of one of our eight academic pieces that we're looking at, and we may have an actual update coming pretty soon in regards to that, but I don't know what the date is going for. Or is that?
January.
January 14?
Implementation, yes. But I can tell you what we have done since summer. We have hired, you know, a math specialist in, at the middle level. We are looking at and observing every Algebra One class in middle school as well as the other math classes. We're concerned about that. We're looking at ELA, same thing, we're collecting that data, and we are going to do a snapshot with every middle school. We've done it with the elementary, we're gonna do it with middle and high to get, to see where the patterns are. We're going to do it with middle and high to get, to see where the patterns are. We are offering two courses for teachers in their Algebra to help them with their content. So we're looking at best practices. We're looking with the Common Core implementation, feedback to students, students doing more questioning and discussing and talking, and so we're continuing to provide professional development for those kids. We're looking at perhaps benchmarks for these students. We have looked at other districts, other states, to see what they're doing and some things that we can do that we're going to be putting in place. But we'll have, I think, a brief or a Board Report, not in January, but I think it's coming up after that. Dr. Hamm, Mike can, I don't think we've decided on the date yet.
One of the areas that they've been addressing is mathematics, and we're actually, you know, we're doing two areas each month, and mathematics is one of the areas that's scheduled for February. One of the things that I did notice in terms of mathematics, there's actually a question about one of our, some of our math software that we're using in middle school right now, and was really pleased now that we have a middle school math specialist, that she had been there on the day the teacher was presenting the information to parents, she had been in the classroom, and we were fortunate that you all beefed up the staff that we have to serve in middle school. And having that specialist who really knows what's going on in those classrooms, I think is making a difference. They really have, have a handle on what's going on, teacher by teacher, classroom by classroom.
And student by student. We really are taking a long, hard look at what we're doing, our practices, and what we can do to help the teachers meet the students' needs, so.
I look forward to continuing to hear about this particular issue because it's obvious across almost every category that that is a big weakness that needs to be addressed.
And we're certainly addressing that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jeff, a couple of questions, ma'am. First, on the early childhood enrollment. Help me out. I'm looking at the data. Unlike Mr. Mann, he's right about the one-year snapshot versus one year. I took the time to go back and look at last year's report and the year before that I kept, so to be able to sort of ask a couple of questions. It seems to be a decline this year in our early childhood enrollment from last year, although we added more classrooms, which would imply that we would have more students. And so, I don't know if you are prepared or someone else is prepared to answer that tonight, but the numbers seem to be lower from 2012 data to 2013 data in terms of number of kids in pre-K.
One of the things that we see here is that this is the number of current students in 2013, 14. So this is a 45th-day number that we're actually making comparisons to, and probably one of the snapshots that we had in the past would have might have been a 90-day or 135. So there may be some small fluctuations in those numbers at a specific point in time.
I kind of thought about that, so I went back to the one last year around the same month.
Okay.
To try to make sure that I, and I guess my concern is that we increased the number of classrooms this year. So even if it was a small fluctuation in numbers, but we added, how many more new early childhood classrooms, Ms. Sumilet, this year?
Three.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, are we, do we enroll fewer early pre-K students this year? Or is that something we're not able to answer right now? And if that's the case, that's fine. We can find out later.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can answer that right at this point, yeah.
The other question is, I would like to see in the future going forward, some early childhood performance data. I want to go back to a question that Ms. Elkins-Johnson asked several months ago. I think we need to take a closer look at what data is out there that indicates how they are performing, so we can begin looking at that, because I think that becomes a tremendous predictor to how well they're going to do or not do by the time they get to third grade and take the pass. And right now, we're not getting any type of performance data on our pre-K kids, so I'd ask that we take a look at that. The second question was on the gifted and talented numbers. We've got the 2012-13 numbers in here. Why don't we have the 13-14 numbers yet?
We haven't, we haven't had all those test scores come in that helped make some of those updates for the 13-14. So we have assessments that come in, assessments that students will take, such as the Ravens Exam, haven't come in. The COGAT and ITBS scores, I believe, are due this week. So those kind of updates, we usually do a hard update at a certain point in the year.
We might want to astrid that in the future, so that people who take the time to look at this will realize, early on, without researching it, that they're looking at old numbers. It would be helpful just to note that, and time the next release of this document to come out after we got those numbers, so we can really see how we are faring in terms of our gifted and talented population, if it's a change going up or down. That would be appreciated, if you would. And I think one more question that I had. I want to echo what Mr. Mann had said regarding the math, all of the past information on, at the eighth grade, and just make sure that academically, we're taking a very hard look at what we need to do to address that as well. And then finally, make sure that when we get the report next time that talks about the high school exit exam and end of course, we wait until those have actually taken place before we get it, so it gives a little more value to the document. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Others this time?
Mr. Chairman, just to add to my previous comment and Mr. Jackson's comments, if there's any way that we can incorporate some sort of trending in this report, I mean, I know it's a snapshot of where we are, but it's kind of, Mr. Jackson took the time to go back and look, and different times, different of us do, but I think it would be helpful if there was any way that you could demonstrate some trending over the maybe, you know, previous two to three years. You're the data guy, I'll leave it up to you, but if you wouldn't mind looking at that.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Well, I agree with you. I want that information, James and Chip.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure this is the best place to do it. I just, I just wanted, do we want to, we want something that we can look at, do we want a report, an actual report, you know what I'm saying, on that? Either way.
I would defer, Mr. Chair, however they can present it.
Yeah, I just want to, you want that information.
I just want information.
Yeah, I think, but I just want to make sure that we don't have a snapshot, just 30 pages.
Sure.
I mean, it begins a document. I do, I want that information too, but I just want to make sure we do it in the right spot. So we'll, I think at some point, you need to make a schedule out of when you're going to give, when you want to present, what information, you know, and have that available to the Board.
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, one of the other things that I've been asking for is an online dashboard, you know, that we can go get this type, a lot of the data snapshot information is in here. You know, I know it's been stated that Alio can provide some of the details here, and that as we move forward with SharePoint, there may be other ways to present that. But, you know, a lot of this kind of, how many students we have, this sort of data, could be in an online situation where we could just log in and see where we are. Those are easy numbers that we can use in presentations or other things. And then the report that we get here could spend more time on the trending, and so we can really see better, performance-wise, where we've been and where we're going, and maybe spend more time on some of those details. It's just a suggestion.
I agree. I think we tried, we've always tried to trend when we saw test scores, you know. We've tried to do that, you know, it's very, it's very difficult for us to do that. And if there's some way you can help us, we appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 10-2, which is a report on our annual financial report audit, comprehensive annual report. Dr. Miley, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Fleming, Board Members, and Dr. Hamm. Just a minute, I want to introduce Matthew Hodges, who is with the firm, accounting firm of Burkitt, Burkitt &amp; Burkitt. And they did our audit this year. But first, I wanted to thank them for such a professional job. As you know, they come into our offices and work from our offices, and they did that with very little intrusion into our work and disruption, so I wanted to thank them for that. Also wanted to thank them for getting it done on time, and also our entire staff. It would not have been done on time, as you know, we're required to submit it by the 1st of December every year, and we did that. We made that deadline, and we wouldn't have made that deadline without our entire staff, and especially with the work of Shelley Allen, and Penny Donini, and Sandy Whitaker. Without them, it would not have been done. You all have copies with you, or you had copies delivered. And I'd also want to make sure that you understand that while my name is on the document, it's from last year's, and so Mr. Davis gets a lot of credit, and the staff gets a lot of credit. And I'd like to introduce Matthew now, and, but I've told Matthew, what you would really like to hear is that we have a clean and unqualified audit, which we do, and that we added funds to our fund balance, which we did. So with that, I'd turn it over to Matthew. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Harry. Dr. Fleming, members of the Board, Dr. Hamm, thank you very much for your time tonight. Tonight, I'd like to present a brief introduction to our audit staff, our required audit communications, as well as a summary of the financial information in the comprehensive annual financial report. As Harry mentioned, our team consists of our audit partner, Larry Montague, myself, and Hayward Barnes, another one of our senior auditors. We certainly want to appreciate, or express our appreciation to Harry and Shelley and all the employees of the Business Services Department in the district. As far as our audit, we tested transactions based on our knowledge of the district's activities. We use our professional judgment in selecting samples. We did not test 100% of transactions. We designed our audit for reasonable, not absolute assurance, as to the financial statements. As a result of those tests, we did not note any instances of noncompliance with district policies. Again, we have issued three clean audit opinions, those being an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves, an opinion that there were no deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting, and an opinion that there were no instances of noncompliance related to the major federal award programs. As a result of our audit, we encountered no disagreements with management. We noted no significant changes in accounting policies. We're not aware of any consultations with any other outside CPAs or audit firms, and there were no issues discussed prior to our retention, which we feel would affect our judgment. There were no significant difficulties whatsoever in performing our audit, and once again, we did receive full cooperation from your personnel, so we appreciate that. As far as the financial stability of the district, once again, the district is to be commended for its excellent financial position due to the foresight of this Board, as well as the Superintendent and members of staff. As far as the bond ratings, Moody's issued an AA1 rating, and Standards &amp; Poor's and Fitch Ratings both issued AA-minus ratings on the bonds as well. And certainly, the district is to be commended for receiving the certificates of excellence in financial reporting from both GFOA and ASBO for 26 consecutive years. It's very impressive. Just to note, again, one of the issues that affects all school districts is Act 388. You can see that you are one of the districts that is continuing to grow, up over 500 students from the past fiscal year. However, the district's management has done an excellent job of increasing the general fund balance for 10 consecutive years. This past fiscal year saw an increase in the general fund balance of $3.6 million. That increase does reflect additional operating costs from opening a new high school, so I just wanted to note that. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding our audit.
Thank you for your report. Very concise, I like. Questions this time for Matthew? Mr. Chairman? Yes, go ahead.
The bond rating, double A minus, is that a change in status or?
No.
Same, okay. And the fund balance, what is the total fund balance? Do you know?
It was $33 million.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you see any changes in law or, of reporting law or anything like that coming up, or, you know, right now?
Nothing significant on the horizon, but things have been changing rapidly in the past, although there is a potential for some changes in the way that these financial reports are presented in coming years, so. Nothing that we anticipate in the next year, though.
Are we up to date with our retirement funding to the state? So there's no gap there?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Other questions? Thank you very much, Matthew. Appreciate it. Dr. Miley, thank you. Item 11 is for next meeting. We have agenda items for, we will not meet again till January 14th of the new year of 2014 at Polo Elementary School. Dr. Hamm, what have we got?
Mr. Chairman, the items that we currently have for that agenda are the Board Officer Elections, Special Recognitions, which we will be having despite the fact that that's at Polo Road. We have, fortunate to have a large number of recommendations, so we're going to spread them over the two meetings that month. We have faculty focus, and then an interim report on the Common Core Implementation. This is the feedback we've gotten about our professional development activities from focus groups, et cetera, about how our implementation of the Common Core is going.
The other items for next time, sounds like a fairly, I think we have 60-something like recognitions. We may have to, like we said, we may have to spread it out, so.
That's for students?
Combination of things, right?
Yes.
I would like, Mr. Chair, that, I noticed in our Board Upbrie, it was mentioned about the teacher incentive during the summer professional program. I'd like to discuss that a little bit further.
That's fine. I think, let's write that down, please, before we forget it. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Chair, I know at the last meeting, I asked that we have a discussion about the Domestic Violence Workshop, sending some teachers and maybe some administrators. If we can go ahead and add that to the agenda, because time is ticking. I think that workshop is in March.
We actually have put together, I just received it today, a report on what we're doing in the district with domestic violence, so we'd be happy to add that information to the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And one other question, I don't know, this is, I guess it wouldn't be agenda item, but I'm having a lot of parents questioning me about the half-days for elementary students. Is that something that we don't plan to put in the calendar? Or how, can somebody explain that to us, so that we can better explain it to the constituents when we're questioned on it? Because at one point, I thought it was in the, on the calendar, and then when I went back and looked, it's not there. So I think we need to have a better way of communicating with the public on half-days for our middle and elementary school students.
Now that the calendar's been approved, we can certainly go through and see which days we want to designate as half-days and make that information public in advance.
Would you please?
We'd be glad to do that.
Because I get a lot of phone calls, and I really don't know. I don't have children in those grade levels, mine are in high school, so I would appreciate that I know whether it's appropriate for the agenda, or if you can handle it the way you want to handle it.
We can handle it.
At least we can get it to the public.
Good points. Anything else for future? Hearing none, we go to our second period of public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board at this time? Seeing no hands, we'll go on with Board Superintendent's comments. I will just start from my left, and I'm going to go to my right. James?
No further comments at this time. Just have a happy holidays.
Just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And I wanted to thank the Culinary Arts Students at Whitewood High School for the delicious meal that they treated us to, and we also had guests from Midland's Technical College, and want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a safe holiday season.
I too want to thank whoever was responsible for having the dinner, joint dinner tonight with Midland Tech officials and Board Members. I thoroughly enjoyed meeting each of those, the ones that I was able to meet and understand their roles at Midland Tech, and I'm looking forward to a much larger collaborative effort working with Midland Tech.
working with Midland Tech, because I think it's an excellent idea, particularly with the Bridge Program, with USC, Clemson, and then several other of the universities and colleges within the state. Also, I want to congratulate Melinda Taylor, that's M-A-L-I-N-D-A, at EL Wright, for her middle school assistant principal. Melinda has also been awarded several things in the past, the Japan Fulbright Scholar and the Millikans Award winner, remember that several years ago. I also want to extend a very happy holiday season, safe holiday season, and keep those families of the deceased people that we've heard on the news, particularly the child from White Dole, that's weighed heavy on my heart, that a mother's child left home for school, and she'll never see that child again. So let's keep those parents and family members in our prayers, and if you know anyone that's celebrating during the holidays, encourage them to not drink and drive. Give them a phone number to a taxi or anyone to pick them up, because having lost two sons, my heart goes out for those parents, and to know that that child's, child was buried today because of a drunk driver on drugs, this child will never get to see a graduation date. So as we celebrate the holiday seasons, let's be cognizant of the fact that some things we just cannot do and drive, because if, once it's done, it's over. And that's all I want to say. And to the Mandela family, I just pray that the sheriff in Lawrence would change his mind, because I think it's very important, particularly when a president of the United States is asked everyone to do, fly flags, have staff, and not to follow the president of the United States is very serious, in my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Specter?
I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and be safe.
Mr. Jackson?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Hamm?
I do have several comments. First of all, I want to really compliment Blythewood for the work that they did to support the dinner tonight. I am really excited about the growing relationship that we have with Midlands Tech and the opportunity to meet with them. I think that offers all kinds of wonderful possibilities for our students and for Midlands Tech. I'm thrilled about that. The students did a great job preparing and serving the dinner, so my hats off to them and to the chef for their work to provide that dinner. And I have to say about Blythewood, coming and looking over at the rail and the work that they were doing to provide gifts and a wonderful celebration for foster families and those children, I mean, you could not help but be extraordinarily proud of the caring students that are here at Blythewood High and the hard work that they did to make that event possible. And that's just one part of the service they're doing during this holiday season, to bring joy to people's lives all around the Midlands area, so my hats off to them for that. Also, Blythewood High School, Susan Newton's been recognized as the National Sodexo Experience winner, so congratulations to her as well. At Spring Valley High School, Greg Rosalov scored a perfect 36 on the ACT, and then perfect 800s on both the math and the writing portion of the SAT. That's a pretty extraordinary achievement. And Miles Aldridge there received a statewide coaching award and has now been named the 2013 South Carolina Football Coach of the Year. Another great achievement for him and for Spring Valley. And then, if you get a chance, starting tomorrow, all five of our high schools, there will be various winter assemblies going on. Our students collect thousands of pounds of food, toys for children, clothing, et cetera, to really meet the needs in our community, and we have to be so proud of them. If you want to have the holiday spirit, you just need to be at one of those assemblies. They're really extraordinary. And last, but perhaps most importantly, I want to say thank you to Dr. Fleming for serving as our board chair. He's provided really excellent leadership this past year, and I appreciate, and all of us appreciate, at the district office, your dedication and service that you've given to Richland Two for 20 years now. Thank you, Dr. Fleming.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Appreciate that. I just want to extend to everyone here tonight, and the very best holiday season you can have, and it's like we've talked about, being safe is just as important as having, you know, having fun with your family and everything else. That is somewhat, that is so important, but being safe and taking care of your family is very important. I also want to, would like to thank Keith Price and tell him what a great job his culinary departments has done, and what a great presentation they did tonight. And do they get a grade for that? I mean, they should have, because it was, it would have been, it would have been a good grade for each and every one of them. But I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into second executive session.
So move.
Could you read that? I think it's-
Okay. I don't know, read it. Okay, I don't have to say it anyway. Public session will recess, and the board will convene an executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student expulsions, student appeals, student transfer requests, personnel matters, legal matters, and contractual matters.
Second, second by Ms. Specter, and we'll vote on that, and then we'll adjourn to public session. I mean, executive session.